Let's go. Hey, welcome everybody. Here and on Zoom. We are, this is the Timmott Select Board Meeting on Thursday, September twenty eighth, seven o'clock, seven oh three, twenty twenty three. Can review the agenda. You wanted to make sure we change the date for our next meeting?
Yep.
Can do that. Yeah. Is there anybody on the agenda that you need to move up at all?
When are we changing the dates?
We don't know yet. Oh, when we get there, we have to remember to do it.
Okay.
That's something that I've been deciding. No.
No, Kevin's daughter is getting married.
Yep.
The two days after, he's asking that we find an alternate.
Yeah.
It may have something going on that day.
Oh, yeah, maybe.
Yep.
All right, then, we can go to the minutes from our last meeting, which was pretty short.
Yep.
Does anybody have any edits?
Nope.
I think they look good.
Yep.
What do you want to make a motion?
I make a motion when you approve the meeting minutes from the last meeting.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, citizens input. Anybody on Zoom or in person? No? Okay. Highway, Eric.
Um, we've been ditching on Harrington Cross Road, we had some washouts up through there, so we just did a bunch of stuff. We put a little bit of stone line ditch in there, kind of bunch of brush, that's all done. Uh, so you did a bunch put to bed. Um, we had some trees leaning near Burt. Um. North End Road, Bonizengas, that were leaning pretty good, so we did a bunch of brush cutting there, and then we cut the brush on us, Timothée will too. Um, so that's all done. So. I've been hauling sand, we got some sand hauled up. Um, the driveway between the old garage and the new garage is almost, uh, tuned up with some decent material on top. Um. And that's about it.
Nice.
Um, I got, did you guys get a chance to look at this thing from Cat? He just gave it to me today, so I apologize if it didn't come in sooner, but just a.
I have not looked at it.
Preliminary.
Real quick.
So, we don't have to.
And if you.
There's no worries, no hurry, no rush, no nothing like that, it's just a, some of these things, the closest one to our, to our number is this two thousand eight.
Yep.
And, um.
Got a lot of hours.
It's got eighty-five hundred hours.
Our machines got what, ten?
Nine, ninety-five hundred, something like that, nine-seven hundred, yeah, so.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Yeah, so, I don't, this just gives us a good, to see where we're at, you know what I mean? And that's what, um, I talked to Jill, who works for Longford, they just got a brand new one, so I just wanted, um, you know, just to see where the new ones are running, and, um, she said that they ordered it two years ago, and just showed up like last week. Um, it was two sixty-six five with a twenty thousand dollar trade-in, is what they got. So, and then I talked to Jeff today, he was here looking at our grader, and he said they lost thirty-five grand on that. The Caterpillar lost thirty-five.
Did you talk to him about if the, like, would he be the one that talked to, talked to about maybe see if we can get ours to skate through for another year or two?
He said you were on borrowed time with that machine, basically, that's what he told me, point blank.
Yeah.
He's like, you know, and I talked to Volvo, not to scare anybody, but I called CRW Woods, is who was the Volvo dealer, and just to see if they had any trade-ins coming back in or anything like that, and, um, they said Volvo does not make it, uh, graders anymore. We got out of the grader business. So, they were the ones that bought Champion. So, just, so we're all on the. You know, all on the same page.
So we're, continue to lose money on this grader, running into the ground.
Right, but he basically, you know, he said it's gonna come a point where you're gonna need one part, and they're gonna be there, so.
Maybe we can put it on our agenda for October, it's not that far away.
No.
And I'm thinking, I'll think about it.
Yeah, get a, it just gives you some idea where we're at, there's.
And do we have a, like, you just said ninety-seven hundred hours is on our grader?
Yeah.
I don't remember what other specs they had, but if, like, it was hard for me to compare, because I don't know what our grader has.
What, if we look at, let's see, the two thousand. Oh, yeah.
It might be in our spreadsheet.
The two thousand thirteen Caterpillar, if you circle the last one on the list, that is about what ours is. Um, but, obviously, it's a, that's the specs, it's a, got a fourteen-foot moldboard, twelve-foot wing, this one's all-wheel drive, it's got forty-five hundred hours, but you're a hundred thirty-seven five with our trade-in.
Yeah.
So, we're out, we're priced out. So, and this is the only ones I found, and I couldn't believe that he had this many. He basically told me today that he sells the most graders for Cat. He said they had a, they had a deal fall through, they had a four-week, they had a machine that was gonna be built in four weeks. The, the company called him and asked him if he wanted it, because the deal fell through. So, I was like, well, it is what it is, but, just so we're.
No, we can have it.
Searching.
We'll talk.
I'm searching, so.
Yeah.
And what year is that?
Ours is a ninety-nine.
I forgot what it was.
Yeah, ours is a ninety-nine. And even, you know, parts is the issue at some point, so, I mean, the, the two thousand eight falls into our budget, but it's got a lot of hours on it.
Right.
And it's still. Well, if it, what you bought brand is it?
That's Cat.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the last one on first page, that's the one I circled. That's in the, that's in our wheelhouse, they want ninety-seven five for it, now give us twenty-three for ours on trade-in, so you're seventy-four five. That's the only one that's even close, I mean, you go up the list and it gets, they get older and more hours.
But it's, but it's only, how many hours has it got?
Eighty-five, eighty-five hundred.
So you're like a thousand hours off from ours.
Ours, but you've got something that you can get there.
Ten years younger in parts possible.
You have any idea how many hours a year you use the grader?
I don't know that, no. No, and I think it depends on how much time we use it in the winter and stuff like that, because we do use it quite a bit for, like, last year we used it a lot, opening ditches up and stuff, because the leather was so up and down. We use it a lot with a wing on it, so there's. You know, depending on the summer, if we can get everything graded out and everything stays good, they're great, but doesn't always work out that.
Are there any other questions from other viewers, Eric? Um, it's just so we can ask them now, and then we'll have this on our next agenda item, but then maybe we can make more decisions or something.
Out of curiosity, do you know of any towns that rent or lease their equipment instead of outright buying it?
A lot of them are doing the leasing now. So, um, and I talked to Guilford, they, they're keeping theirs for ten years, because they, um, he's got one that's gonna be for sale, that was about what we're looking for, and it was ten years old, but, um, I think we're priced out of that one too.
Never, what, what kind of town is Guilford if they're leasing every ten years? That's insane.
Yeah. I don't know, it's down near Brattleboro somewhere, so I don't have to drive it, but.
I think it's just south of Brattleboro.
Is it a big town or no, or?
I don't know, I don't.
It's a lot of money.
Yeah, because there's, you know, if you paid for that one that, only for just got it, three-twenty-one.
Maybe a grader is the only piece of equipment they have.
No, he's got, no, he's got lots of stuff. I was like, oh, wow, really?
That's crazy.
Do you want to? Know more about leasing, Judy?
Like, I, I was just curious, um, I know some contractors are getting away from owning the equipment and preferring to rent it, because it's more effective for them, I just didn't know if that would be something the town might be interested in, if it would be more effective for us.
It'd be interesting to know. Yeah, I actually wouldn't mind checking into it, it'd be interesting to know how they do that with the used equipment.
Yeah, he says, Jeff said he could lease out and look the rest, um, use these if you wanted to, which was, I don't understa, I didn't ask, because I knew, we've talked about it before, and it was.
Yeah.
Off on that one, but.
Yeah.
I'd, I'd more than be happy to ask him how it would work.
Yeah.
If he ever wanted to look at.
Then you get into a lease payment, then you're getting into upkeep, insurance.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know.
But something we could have for our next meeting?
Right.
Information for.
Yeah, if you want me to get. Now, let me see, want me to give the, have him give us just a round number on, say, the. Well, that's got a twelve foot, wait a minute. Well, let's just. That twenty thirteen is the closest one to what we're looking for, but that's a hundred thirty-seven, you're not gonna have him give us, just give us some rough numbers on how it would work with that machine?
Sure.
Just to see, I mean.
Yeah.
And that's not gonna be available till Christmas anyways, so, and that's, I think, I think some of his numbers are a little bit, his, his delivery dates are, he doesn't know. On the new, you know, because he can't trade the old one, the new one comes in, and they don't tell him until a couple of weeks before they show up, so. But I'll ask, yeah, let's see what he says.
I'm trying to remember to have that one in the journal. Okay, what about cutting the roadside trees? We have this RFP to. Anybody have any questions? Comments? Edits?
There's one, one place that we haven't filled in yet, and that's on the bid submission card, because until you get the grant, you really don't know.
Right.
You're gonna have to have it done by, so once we, once we get the grant and the paperwork signed, we can send these out, then we'll fill in that month daily. But I tried, we tried to incorporate everything that was talked about, it's obviously really good. David, do you have any comments?
Hi, nope, here I am. Um, I have not had a chance to look over that form anymore, so. No. Sorry.
That's fine. There is a lowercase t on point number three, uh, second to last sentence, or third to last sentence, or point number three. And on the first page. Point number three, the third to last sentence. Tell me again, what the.
It's a lowercase t on town.
T on town, okay. I didn't hear that part of it.
I am not sure I said it fully either.
I heard lowercase something, and then I was looking like, wow, I don't see a P, I don't know. Well, I guess if you do notice anything, you know, before we send it out, you'll have one more opportunity, but.
Yeah. Have we heard any more on that? No.
No, we just said what it.
So maybe we wait till our next meeting to. Approve this?
Well, if you can approve it, pending any, any else that comes in.
Okay. I'm comfortable with that, are you?
Yeah.
I'm comfortable with that, Kevin?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I will make a motion that we approve it pending. Anything else that comes along with that?
Much further editing is needed.
Uh, sounds much better. So I'd like to second it.
I will second that.
Alright, all in favor?
That would.
Aye. Okay. Winner, salt bid?
Well, the update on that is, we usually discussed it at the last meeting, I talked to Eric about taking the regular salt off, we thought we should move it on there, because sometimes we need regular salt.
Mm-hmm.
And so, you had approved last year's, all I did was change the dates, so I sent it out, and they're supposed to be coming back on October twelfth.
Great.
You know, you didn't officially approve the bid, but it wasn't very much different from last year, I mean.
Right.
I tried to make it clear that we wanted a price for de-icer products and for regular ones, so.
Right, that was, that was the one, then that seems great. Anybody? No? Great, alright, driveway permit application for Kevin Brown?
Oh, we usually do the last part on this, I don't know, we've done a couple of these, right?
Yes.
So, uh, culvert needed is a check.
Okay.
Culvert size is a fifteen inch. I don't know. And I put, I told him thirty feet minimum, and if he wants to put more in, he can, he's kind of in the trumpet. You know, the trumpet tube of where he's coming in.
Yep.
So, um, I told him as needed, uh, he doesn't need to cut it through to the altar, I told him. Um, ditching just to daylight, um, to make the culvert thing, and, um, he checked with me, we went over it, so.
Do you know what size culvert?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, then. Did you say?
Yeah.
Um, and there's no, so there is no issue with location in relation to Rod?
Oh, no, he's moved, it's about halfway between the property line and the existing firm entrance, I did it.
Not on his map.
Oh, yeah.
Might be, yes, this is what he wants to do it. Only using that mechanism.
Yeah, that's the one.
Right, this isn't halfway in between.
Yeah, well, maybe he's not halfway, he moved it, he did, we, he did move it down just a little bit.
So that's my question on here, is it doesn't say how far it is.
Yeah, there's no real, there's no real numbers to put, is it replaced it with that? I didn't, I didn't have.
Distance from property line?
The proposed access will be located approximately feet from the intersection of, I would say, from here and not really where, you really could have a number in there.
Alright, well, I'll, I'll talk to him and get his number, because he, he talked to me afterwards, because I told him that, well, we looked at it, he wanted to put it in a certain place, and I stood there, and I'm like, well, visibility is good, but if you move it north more, the visibility will be better, um, looking side. So, um, he's like, wow, and then he, he kinda said, well, I'd like it here, and he caught, he caught me like two days later, and he says, you know, I looked at that some more, so I think I'm gonna move it out.
Okay, so if you're, if you were him, get a number that you can put in there, so that we know, you know, two years from now, and he comes, decides to build it then, and he puts it down here someplace else, he can say, no, it's supposed to be X amount of feet from the intersection.
We're going all the way to the intersection, is that what we're doing?
Well, that's what it says.
Okay.
From the intersection of this road, which is one forty, the town highway number two.
But I think this, uh, the wheel out.
We don't want to go down to, you know, the next intersection, or North End Road, David.
I didn't want to, we'd come off the property line.
It doesn't say how far it is from the property line, I mean, I read the.
But can we, can we use that as, we can't use that as a measure from property lines?
Well, if you amend, put the permanent price.
We can measure from the intersection, so maybe we'll just have a dip walk, hopefully, and we can just move it out, no problem.
And so, Ali, I heard you were concerned about this, and the driveway is up by Rod's starts.
I'm, I'm more interested than concerned, I would say, but, thank you.
So you can guys sign this, and just contingent upon it, really, the filling was. Those things there.
Yep. Do you both feel comfortable doing that?
Yeah, I mean, as long as, if it's just getting filled out, I think that's fine.
Yeah. And as long as it's definitely not any closer to Rod's property line.
But I think it's going this way a little bit more.
Perfect. Yeah, then I'm comfortable with that.
This is the original, that's a coffee.
Great.
He probably should use the farm entrance, it's very.
That's what I, yeah, I mean.
He didn't want, I, I threw it out there.
So he's gonna keep the farm entrance too.
What's that?
He's gonna keep the farm entrance.
What was his reasoning behind not wanting to use the farm?
Well, they're gonna do this out there with heavy jactors, and they didn't want to mess up his driveway. Basically.
He said this.
That's what I said.
Okay. Um, alright, we have an updated equipment fund, did you have something else with that, Gal?
I just wanted to make sure that he knew he couldn't make that into a loop driveway. He's got one in access for his house, he's gonna get those down around.
To the farm driveway?
To the farm, right.
And as long as it stays where it is.
Well, if he has questions, he can come to a select board meeting and we can hash it out. Um. Updated equipment fund spreadsheet, you see this?
We have it.
Yep. We added in the tractor and the mower and the wood chipper. Which we definitely will have to buy used if we replace them in.
Twenty years.
Hopefully twenty is great, because that makes the numbers very easy, well, not easy, but much better.
Well, it depends on what it costs in twenty years.
That's true. That's true.
Maybe thirty or forty.
It's the problem.
Well, just to not dwell on this driveway thing, but I need that number, so we can assign him a nine, one number for one driveway, so. It was definitely.
Alright, oh, so, fuck him down as soon as I see him, we have that.
Not an easy person to get a hold of.
Well, no, he's been hanging out there as good as it.
Um, so I don't, we don't really need to take any action on this, it's more just to have this.
We look at it and have any questions and. We figure it out or can't figure it out, and, yeah, have recommendations.
Anybody have any?
What are we at right now with the truck, seven years?
That's something that we should talk about. Right now. We haven't been.
Yep, it's wired to.
The, uh, I'm being told that those trucks are two years out now. Or.
Delivering?
Delivery dates between, between getting built and getting the bodies put on them, and so we're looking at a replacement in a couple of years.
Mm-hmm.
So, would you like me to start running down some information on that?
And this is the black truck that's.
Yeah. Yeah, that's going to be in the seven-year mark. In two years. Well, if we wait two years, then, then be another two years where we get one, so.
Well, think about it. We can.
Well, we might find out if our seventy-five thousand's any.
It's true.
Based in reality or not.
Right.
They won't have, right, that's, that's two. The pricing would be helpful to, to the handle on it, figure out if this is right or not, we wouldn't have to pay for it until we actually correct it, so we'll still have time to.
Yeah.
Save one.
If it's working, it's in the program.
But, but if this is not a realistic number in two years, then.
Right.
Yeah.
We should update our numbers.
Well, the nice thing would be is we could lock it in now.
Did he, he didn't have to give you any current numbers, did you?
No, I didn't go that far, he just, I just heard from other towns that these are two years out, and then I made a phone call, and Jeff was like, they're right. I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't.
I mean, it is probably prudent to.
Well, we got told that the loader, and then the loader showed up several months earlier.
Well, that was over a year though, it wasn't better.
It got here a different year than we were anticipating.
Right.
Fiscal years.
Would you like him to?
I mean, information might not be so bad, and then we could know better.
Yeah.
Whether we want to pursue it or not.
Yeah. Information is good.
Okay, oh.
I just didn't want to have to think about it.
Yeah, well, none of us do.
Yeah, but you're right, no.
The world we live in now, unfortunately. If you wait two years, then we're gonna have a wheel.
Yeah.
You have any other question? That would be a glove by that point.
It's true.
I doubt it, but maybe.
Any other questions on the equipment fund? Okay. Alright, we have our updated to-do list, we'll just do the highway tasks. Right now.
Yeah, I think we went over the last time Eric had left.
Yeah.
So.
Right. Um. Alright, Eric, roller completion.
Yeah, we're still working on it.
So it's still in process?
Yeah.
Stormwater updates and the plan?
Um.
Have some kind of an idea in the role, maybe done?
Well, I'm sort of dragging my feet because of the graders.
Says we'll work on, is that this winter or was that winter?
That was last winter.
That was last.
And we didn't have time, so, um.
Yeah.
I knew the grader was coming up for, um, you tend to want to build it to fit whatever you're gonna have here, so. Um.
Yeah.
I've been dragging my feet on that one, it's gone to the back burner, so I apologize, but.
Well, then that's.
There's a reason.
What we want, no.
There's a reason.
Not just.
Well.
Reason for it.
Yeah.
You know, it's nice to know the reason.
Yeah. Yeah, I've been kind of dragging my feet because I didn't know what grader was for.
Yeah, I mean, I think that makes sense, knowing what machine you're putting. You're using, okay, stormwater updates.
Um, we are good on our, what we have supposed to be completed, we're ahead of schedule, so. But I do need to get in and actually update the system, so it shows up on the portal.
Yes, and is it something that's like easy to share, like, that way?
You guys can check it out on the internet.
Yeah.
I can show you how to do it, and, um, but they're, apparently they're way behind too, whoever updates the portal things, so they're like, there's a date on there, and she's like, they're not doing very well on their updates, but neither am I, so, but I just need time to sit down and, hold it, man, I got a bunch of segments written down, and we've got some more this summer that we've done, so.
And like the one we just did over on North End Road, that's all, all that paperwork got submitted?
That will be updated, yep. Well, Gal, they're working.
No, that paperwork has not been submitted, it'd get reimbursed, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
It would it?
I, I mean, equipment time and stuff like that, Eric.
From Eric?
And it's from August eighth, when the state actually approved it, so expenses from August eighth forward.
Okay.
What we can use.
Great, well, hopefully we can get that done and be reimbursed.
Um, they have not got the doors painted yet. For the older, and I haven't been on the roof yet.
Hmm, where are we?
He jumped down to nine.
Okay.
I read through it the other day. Uh.
Um, the doors.
Back to three?
Back to three.
We, yeah, I was just about to ask, are those getting painted by?
Road crew.
They're, they're painted by the road crew.
You're gonna do those white, I assume?
No.
I'm doing green and cream, so. If you want to do purple, go ahead.
We'll get our cream color, whatever, doesn't matter.
Um.
Slight working decide.
Yeah, your work plan for twenty twenty-four?
Oh, I haven't gotten into that yet.
Okay.
Um. Well, well, see what we got left on, what we wanna knock off the list, and.
Yeah.
Um.
Fiscal year twenty twenty-four, yes.
Yeah.
Um.
Oh, we're hitting it down.
We are in it now, yeah.
So, we're been working on it, actually, so.
You said the driveway, the. Um. You said that driveway is just about done down there?
Yeah, yeah, we got a little bit more. Doing up to do the note, down.
Possible to put a little more gravel out by the road, so we come off the entire road into the transfer station. It's a little bit smooth. It's a little bit smoother.
I put some up there the other day.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I put some up there the other day. I did the, the turn toward Wallingford too. I put some on that side. Um, but that thing's getting. It's getting pretty wide. I think we would bust on the home on them. They have, well, not.
Your work, do, do you keep like a spreadsheet for your work plan? I'm just curious like how you.
Uh, I've been just doing it, the one like I showed you last time, and then, um, I'll just do another one for next summer. You guys want, you have to do it that way.
Been thinking of like a, even just like a shared.
Something we can look at.
Google Doc that. If, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I haven't started thinking about that somewhere yet.
It's okay.
Get through this one.
I know who feeling.
You could make next summer a priority, that'd be great.
Town garage. Four. Is it the final grade? We're waiting for that?
Yes, that, that's what I'm, I was working on. It's almost done.
Okay.
Yeah, that's almost done.
All right, so we have salt and sand shed design engineering report. It's not until December. Our work plan for the astir removals is, um.
There was a, on the salt and change, salt and sand shed. Stephanie sent something today.
I saw that she emailed, but I didn't have time to read it.
No, just. It's kind of an update. We're at seventy dollars a square foot and there's some that are a hundred and seventy dollars.
Lovely. I like seventy better. Um.
Well, it looks like ours is the biggest of any of them that they're designing. But they are planning on having, I think, that in December, though.
I, uh, just a side note there, when I was talking to Guilford, they just did one, apparently somebody in the past five years. And, uh, he said that was the size I want. I was looking at was the size he started with too. And then they shrunk it down and they can pile the material up, so that's, I think that's what's going to end up happening.
Right.
Which is good. It sounded like it. Maybe we can, maybe we can get there.
Yeah. And I'm hoping they're working with that in mind, like they were going to give us the spectrum of like shrinking it down and having it build up.
Yes.
All right, six. Well, we're doing this grant to hopefully remove a bunch of these trees, so.
Yeah, and we got a bunch.
No more.
We got a bunch of them. This one we did before the paving project too. We got a bunch out of theirs, so.
Yeah.
I think that's, that worked out okay. And probably that will be on my twenty twenty four summer project as well.
Yeah.
Do another stretch and. Probably we'll have to, hopefully one forty, most of one forty will be done. We can go after. For the Easter.
We just did the equipment fund list. Spring road maintenance practice policy. Um, this was something that you were gonna look into, Gail, and you haven't found anything.
I haven't looked very hard.
Yeah.
It was something that came through not too long ago and I flagged it, but I haven't had a chance to do it.
Yeah. We'll just. We did nine transfer station. We.
I think that one we probably want to wait until we get a design from.
Yeah.
Those guys.
And we also have our committee looking into it. Shade tree policy. We're having that, that's still on hold. roadside right of way wood policy.
Yeah, where are we at with that?
Me and I talked about it the other day, but nothing has come of it.
No, I can't read her name, but she's waving her hand.
I'm just saying goodbye. I'm signing off. Thank you so much, everyone. Bye.
Our roadside right of way wood policy. Didn't we draft one at some point?
Thought we had an older one. Thought we had an old one.
I think we've just talked about stuff in the match.
We haven't actually written one up.
Should we put it on the agenda for next time or?
Yeah, we could do that.
Since we are in the fall. Fall just started.
We've got plenty of time. Calm down.
I don't know. I'd like them back. Okay.
Yeah, yesterday was July, right?
The traffic, oh, it's too bad Ally just left. Traffic study committee. Has she come to any meetings?
She was at last night's meeting. Um, so we're still working on things. We're still putting together. Uh, signage. Tossing around. Bean. Um. More enforcement, which is, could possibly be an issue. Um, because the sheriff's department's having, um, personnel issues. There's people that actually want to do it. Um, so we're still working on stuff.
Yeah, our enforcement is not, we haven't had our ten hours a year for a while.
No.
Last year we had voted in twenty three thousand and we spent seventeen.
So. Officer here is our new officer. He was at Jim's accident. Which was two weeks ago. And I haven't seen him in town since.
He had somebody stopped. Somebody reported today that he had somebody stopped. Jerry, was it you that was telling me that was somebody, the sheriff had somebody stopped somewhere?
Yeah, um, um, just as you're starting to go up Crow Hill, they were going toward, the person was going towards Wallingford.
So I mean, he's hanging out on Easter, which is awesome.
But the committee is still working on recommendations. Kate, the investigating, Ethan Peppin from the regional commission was there and he sent a really big email today about speed signs, feedback signs and. What they can do and what they can't do and what our expectations are, so.
Right, great.
It might be a little high.
That's fine. All right, let's go back to, that's all I have for the to-do list for the highway. We have our end of year reports.
It's almost done.
Next month?
No, you'll have it in a couple of days.
Okay.
And if you have it for, for Sandy, um.
But we'll go over it in the October meeting.
Yeah, right now it's, we got reimbursed for the paving grant, but not the culvert grants or.
Somewhat in the right, right direction.
In the red, but there will be more donations coming in this year that we're not anticipating.
Sweet. Money coming in is awesome.
Seventy three thousand on the town garage and. One, maybe a hundred of that was a pack grant, but. And we, we reimbursed ourselves sixty thousand from the capital fund, so the capital fund still owes the highway another thirteen thousand, so that will reduce our deficit once that gets.
Yeah, you, you can email those to us whenever they're ready. That would be great. It takes me a little while to go through it, so.
Yeah, it's not a, not a quick thing.
No.
The big, big takeaway is there's no big fat lot of money to do or carry over this year.
Right, which I expected. Okay, our warrants and orders?
There's two months.
Didn't go last time. Does anybody see anything? Ready to anything?
No.
What was the mulcher rental?
Where is that? Depends on, well, we used it on one forty, we used it on. North End Road, chop up the hay. But lays down and the wind doesn't get under it and it's staying there.
And it actually pulls the soil.
Yeah.
Five or six times ago, we had the opportunity to buy from Snowboard, but now we more than paid her twice to the air.
That does do a nice job.
Yes.
There are no questions? We can make a motion to approve.
I'm making a motion to approve the warrants and orders.
I'll put that all in favor. Hi.
Hi.
Yeah, all right. We have the recreation committee. Is anyone from the recreation committee here?
No, no, the recreation committee is on there. I explained that all that was.
Yeah, yeah. Do we know when the mower is coming?
Um, it's supposed to be here.
That's.
Saturday.
Nice.
So it is. Yeah. We've been in contact.
Nice.
We want to try it out, then.
Yeah, there's. There's about four hours worth of work down there. Between, probably, I'm assuming you guys want to mow the back lot too.
Yeah, I would, I mean, yeah, otherwise it'll just keep.
Yeah.
Growing up.
Take it up there and get everything. Down there. Glenn is, Glenn is.
This was his last day.
He's like fourteen weeks ago.
Yeah.
Pretending, he works long here and comes in later.
Yeah. All right, we're on recreation committee.
Recreation committee. You guys appointed David Levant and Martha Stanley. I notified the other members and Pauline and Paul sent me back an email and said, well, Wheaton wanted to be on there. But Wheaton is not talking about it, so the authorities, maybe at five and let them leave and. Muppet, sometimes they say, and hopefully we won't have what happens in Wallingford. Wallingford just keeps, the recreation committees just keep quitting.
Oh, no.
En masse, yeah.
Oh, no.
So hopefully we'll have a better relationship.
Yeah.
Or you can make it do the bigger and add Wheaton, but Wheaton didn't.
No, he, he didn't talk to me about it. I think we just leave it at five and. Did they need direction from the select board? Are they gonna?
I think we kind of gave them.
There is some direction in the minutes.
Yeah, okay.
Go back and say, I think we've talked about them trying to figure out, you know, do a study or survey and maybe the thing with the regional commission.
Yeah.
Technical assistance to help us do a survey of what people want and what they expect and we can figure out what we can afford and.
Yeah, some of the low cost measures we had, we haven't taken it off our art list yet, but.
And you still have until the end of twenty twenty four to decide how to spend that, but you don't have to.
To spend it, which I decided, right. Great, so they can now meet? Is that great?
I think they were waiting for, for word.
Yes, here officially can meet.
They're blessed.
They're blessed to go. All right, our, our update.
Our update is what's approved, what's going to, this little thing we're paying now at the end, seven hundred and forty dollars that we actually spent for the iPad. And I tried to put that over the other column. It says, you cannot change an array.
A little frustrating.
Anything in that little square, because I don't know. So you didn't actually spend eight hundred and seventy.
Right.
But we validated a hundred, over a hundred thousand and we've got about seventy seven thousand left.
Right.
And I put what we were actually spending, there's something for a little bit less.
Yep.
Like the emergency generator for the fire department came in a thousand less, the. Electricity for the old primary came in three thousand less.
Oh, wow, that's incredible. That's a big drop.
The old primary would like to ask for some more money because the cost of materials were, I didn't write anything.
Yeah, I kind of figured that was going to be the case.
That'll be hopefully for the next meeting, but I just didn't get to it.
Yeah, well, there's an extra three thousand dollars. We thought we were expecting electricity. We didn't do.
Well, I figured that, but that, no, Gail had already told me that the materials, nine, five hundred.
I mean, we're, I mean, we don't, we don't have it, we don't have it in our budget for these couple of materials, so.
And then, and that's not counting somebody to actually do that wall.
Right.
So realistically, you're looking at.
I'll present something next month.
Perfect.
That will be a general, it, it's not going to be like dollars and cents. It'll be a, a number because you could literally throw any number at us and we would take it.
Right.
I know we won't get any number, but, but it, but it does have really nice lights in there now too, so that's.
Well, I mean, the, the, I said before, we've gone this far with the building.
Oh, yeah.
It'd be foolish not to.
Yeah, it's a, it's a town building and it has been, it has been conserved, preserved, and it now has electricity, so.
And that back wall, that needs to be.
It needs to be addressed and the interior needs to be addressed too, because it, we need, we're going to need a ramp. We're also going to need a ramp because. Per code, per state building.
Yeah.
We, town building, we're going to have to have, um, handicap access, so. But I'll, I'll throw something at the next one.
Yeah. And it's.
Lights under the porch.
Oh, that's awesome.
So fire is going to go in the basement.
I talked to Matt Ford, he said that wouldn't be a problem.
Oh, that's great. And if it is possible to have, you can have like the total number, but then also have it all, you know, have it broken down as to like.
It'll just be roughly. It won't be broken down very much.
Well, it'll be like the walls are the cost this much of the ramp business. I mean, it's not all going to happen in one year, but.
Right, yeah, it's gonna.
Budget time, I think the old primary is going to say, hey, can you put some more money in the planning fund?
Right. Um, but knowing what, like what we could do this year and then, or what has to happen this year versus like what can be put into.
And taking into consideration that it can change. Yes, I am.
Sorry. Jerry.
Um, I wanted to know, because I can't find it. I thought we were going to set money aside to improve the air quality in the town office, so, um. Those of us that. Would like to can attend meetings in a safe way, but I didn't find it when I looked over that.
That was part of that grant, a different grant that we wrote. Wasn't there something we were?
No, I think you just authorized me to go get them and I just haven't done it yet.
Oh, okay. Um.
Don't let me forget, Jerry. Keep pounding me. I'll get some sooner or later.
Okay.
Are they covered by ARPA? Are they covered by a different grant?
Um, they weren't that expensive, so I'll, I'll look back. It might be that we authorized a part of the money to do it, but I haven't.
Okay.
I'll, I'll stick it back on here some days.
Okay, great.
Um, Kevin, the fire department work on it's. Anything there? Those, there's a list there. Are any of those things going to happen?
Yeah, so we did, um, we haven't gotten any numbers, actual numbers together. Um. With some of the guys did meet. It was the night of the Mill River Fire, so I was not able to actually be there. A few of the guys did meet, go over some stuff as far as numbers. I have no idea and I'm still waiting on Matt and I gotta contact him. So I'm still waiting on Matt to find out what it's going to cost to put. Each individual truck on its own electricity, on its own power supply.
So you could have those numbers for us?
Next month, next meeting, yeah.
Okay, great.
It's two weeks.
This is a late meeting, September. Well, maybe not.
It's going to be, it's going to be a little bit, three weeks maybe.
All right.
I, I, I should be able to, yeah, I should be able to.
You want to switch the plan commission meeting in the select board, maybe in October?
Not particular of why.
Well, the select board. Well, the select board, Kevin's daughter's gonna be here in two days after, so we switch the select board and the plan of mission and.
I guess they'll make both if we do that. Talking a different Thursday, I might have issues.
Yeah, we can do that. I don't think anyone on the, the plan commission is gonna object.
Okay.
Sweet.
So that would, that, that will go, the question would be at there.
So we're looking at what's that date gonna be?
It would be the nineteenth. You got three weeks to come up with a move.
Unless I go on, unless I go on their honeymoon, I might not. They're going to Ireland. Kind of jealous, I want to go to Ireland pretty bad.
Alright.
I don't think you'll put in your support.
Probably not.
Is there anything else on this list that we need to? Think about, get more information for?
I'm thinking we might be able to take the heat pumps for the town office off. We are in the, and we are treating, after when somebody's supposed to come and do an assessment, and I think instead of going ahead. Funds of, who I don't want to, their loans or they're actually gonna be funds, but. And probably should leave that until, yeah, we did that assessment or I did more information for Maggie.
Great. Anybody else have any comments, questions? No, okay.
But thank you for cleaning it up, it's much easier to understand now.
Thank you. Okay. The honor roll, what did they, what is the historical, the?
There's a lot of.
Oh, I see it, yeah.
Some showed up, some lost, I got my Zoom invited them to talk, which is. He was gonna Zoom, but he never did. So the. Just of it is, is the Historical Society doesn't have any. Staff or volunteers that are willing to look up all that information, so we just want to keep the one out here. For World War Two and the Korean War.
Okay.
We've got two people that we know were in World War Two to be added, and I think. Ken France is supposed to be fixing up the sun. Because there, there are, you know, that's one reason in the early nineties we did this one out here to honor everybody in all wars, then we weren't forgetting somebody or.
Yeah.
Some skirmish and we do add. How much of a war does it have to be in there?
Right, no, that makes sense, yeah.
So. Unless we hear differently from the board, we're gonna repair and fix the one that's over on them.
So they have two additional historic names to add to the list?
One is a young and one is a. Forget the other name, but one of them is Elizabeth Youngling.
Do either of you have any? Questions about that, it does make sense to me.
Yeah, okay. Makes sense to me as well. There were a couple of. Vietnam veterans that were interested in if they were gonna add that and have their names, but, you know, again, somebody's gotta do research and.
Right. It's an undertaking.
Yeah. Well, the way this reads, it looks like you, the board would be kept to just World War One and Korean vets, so I don't, so I guess the Vietnam vets would be.
Be what our marble learning unit is for.
Unless you wanted to do something else, and then these were at the World War Two and the Korean War, actually decided at town meeting, I think. They did it originally, I don't have a chance. But I guess the select board could have that. Decision to, but you gotta do something, you know.
If we were gonna make.
We had to raise money to pay my parents to do this one out here.
Yeah. Well, and it would be something that if there was enough of an interest, I think.
Right.
Then, and there was a group of people that wanted to do the research and do it, then I think I would feel like pursuing it, but at this point. Going along with what the Historical Society proposes makes sense. Any other questions?
I don't think there's been anybody that's gone to rag Afghanistan.
Yeah, sure there is.
Alright, do we want?
Yes. Well, he's not, well, he's just.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's just barely front to this, so.
Okay, um.
Right, well, then you have to figure out, is it, were they living in Timor, from the survey?
Which is no.
That sounds like a whole.
People that don't want to.
That's true, yeah. Yep. Yep, some people want that life, part of their life to be.
So we're going with what the Genealogical Society is proposing?
Yeah.
Yeah, sounds good. Yeah, will you just send a response to Stan, just to say that we agree with that? Nick?
Do we need to do the housing thing?
Oh, sorry, I was gonna move this one instead of this one. Housing.
The housing. We have, everybody knows much about the housing rehab program, it started back in early nineties. And it helped well-income people. Put it in separate system, throw wells, fix the roofs, fix the houses and stuff, and. Maybe ten or twelve, it was six towns that did it, that's a consortium originally. And it was supposed to be. Paid back like ten years later. The program got done and all the towns, you know, people started paying a moment's back, they were mortgages. And the town, all the other five towns took their money and I don't think any of them has a program anymore, we have, we still have people paying back. Um, one is almost done. We have two that have not paid back. Cause they were unable to, and the committee at the time decided that they didn't have to because they just couldn't afford it. And so there was a rehab committee, and now it's fallen on the shoulders of the select board. So I didn't have a request from one of them for the goodness that they don't have to pay back. But I don't think I want that.
Yeah, we should go into executive session for that.
So if we can do that at the very end, then we can discuss the pros and cons.
Sounds good.
There was one, there was one that fell it up, um, old store down here, that I haven't been. The bank took over, so we, we were second mortgage, so the town lost its. Hold on, I need that money to repair.
Yeah.
It helped a bunch of people out.
Yeah.
And most of paid back.
Okay.
Just a couple of stories.
Alright, Rick had a suggestion. Uh, the last select board, this is a feedback form from Rick Fowler, the last select board meeting, there was. Mention of road commissioner job description options, I would like to encourage the select board to continue options discussions. Right. We will. Take it under advisement. Any other?
He was on the select board many years ago and somebody was like, maybe with the postman, he says, I think we'll take that under advisement.
Well, there you go. Uh, something about sitting in the chair, maybe, um. Members' concerns? That's you too? Nothing? Okay.
No.
Miscellaneous correspondence and mail?
So that is the notice of the determination of a heavy cut. It's been supervised by a force service, states required to send it to us, and we don't have to take it in action. It's just if somebody comes and says, hey, someone comes here, you know about that, we can say yes. You know, of the guys, twelve hundred acres, he's only cutting on. A couple hundred and these little patches here and there, it's not a big clear cut anymore.
Yeah.
And if you have any questions, you can ask David, cause he's the force.
Perfect.
And I, cause I asked him.
Well, now that I know that, I'm gonna ask some questions.
Um, what is considered a heavy cut?
A heavy cut? David, what's a heavy cut?
Time to find the mic, anything over forty acres.
So I'm gonna be right under.
It's gonna be, you know, it's a, we're, we're putting a quite a few patch cuts up on the, basically up on the purchase there to get rid of all the. Poor quality, uh. Trees and trying to avoid beach regeneration.
Nothing on the original, I know, right?
Nope.
Okay.
Great. Thanks, David.
There may be a conversation happening about the Penn Road, we're not sure yet, but I assume we'll, we'll be talking to the town about that if it looks like that's a consideration.
Okay.
Consideration to take trees out, something like that?
For a log truck coming out the Penn Road, yeah.
Well, let us know if it. Becomes a.
Yeah.
Question, and then we can talk about it.
Yep. Yep.
Perfect, um.
And the other thing is here is the emergency reimbursement rates. Now we're in. Natural flood insurance program, because of disaster, every. Um, FEMA will reimburse. Seventy-five percent, and now the state will reimburse twelve and a half percent. They were only reimbursing us seven and a half percent. So, this is a list of all the towns in the county, what their percentage rates are. Like Killington and Mount Tabor don't have national flood insurance, so they only get small enough.
Yeah, they should.
I wouldn't think they've gone.
Right.
But go back to Irene.
That's crazy.
We had a mudslide.
Things are crazy now. Alright, cool. So we are now gonna call an executive session for personnel issues. The first, maybe few minutes will just be the three of us, and then we'll bring in. You, Eric, and Gil. After. Okay.
Moving into executive session for the purpose of personnel.
Don't you need to stop the recording?
Oh, stop the recording in the minutes I went. Otherwise it's gonna be a lot of dead air. Excellent, executive session at eight thirty-five.
The board is exiting executive session at eight thirty-five. Welcome everyone back to regular meetings. We are going. To. Move to forgive the. Mortgage forgiveness request. We will vote on it, would anyone like to second that motion I made?
Yeah, we'll second it.
All in favor?
Alright.
Uh, that was the last thing from our agenda. So our meeting is in October nineteenth, at seven o'clock.
So beginning of this end of the year report, this you can see.
Yeah, it'll take, it'll take me about that long to. Have time to sit at with it and look at it.
What I gave you in June was basically everything, it's just some of the stuff had to be rearranged, some gravel that was in. The town that really belonged in the town garage, so things that, the bottom line didn't change much, but the.
Right, where things were allocated, yeah.
But all those special reports and the special funds, those are. Right amounts and that kind of stuff.
Perfect.
Sweet.
Anything else? Feel good?
Yeah.
We will move to adjourn. Oh, I am so ready to take some Benadryl. I'm trying really hard, my whole back, all these things right now, miserable. Just like wearing headphones and you don't hear them, I was like, I'm getting stuck by nettles, it's like, it's making sense.
A lot of nettles. Sometimes worse.
Well, what was funny is I was doing the blueberry.